To talk about traffic issues for the surrounding area of Encantada and Pembroke Pines Charter West Campus. We had, a couple of weeks ago, had another town hall meeting where we discussed a bigger area of tra- you know, traffic concerns. And out of that particular meeting came the request for something more specific for Encantada. So, we set up this meeting for tonight and we're gonna have a little bit of a presentation for you all. City Engineer Carl Kennedy will be giving a presentation and at which point we will then also, some other discussion that will come up. But then we will, when it's over with, we will open the floor for residents' questions and so we can make sure that we address all of those issues. But before we start, I'd like to introduce Mayor, Mayor Frank Lortiz is here. Good evening. Barbara Lortiz, she's the one that's here. Carl Kennedy, our city engineer, is here. City Manager Dodge is here. Lady Journey Samborn is here. County College Commissioner Castillo is here also. We have our presentation from our PD tonight, traffic, and they will also be able to shed a little light and provide some information. Your president, your board is here. Do you want to, Mr. Loib, do you want to introduce anyone from your board that's here?
First of all, thank you everyone from Comp, Officer Loib, Olivia Holcomb. I know we've been dealing with this issue for a long time, I can say personally. It dates back to 2000, most of you are experiencing it now. But we, definitely the purpose of this meeting is to please, voice your concerns, the city, they're being very receptive and they want us to find a solution, let's find a solution, so we don't have to continue to deal with this. We do have our treasure room, Mr. Dennis King on our board is here. Thank you, Ann, for coming.
So, before we actually get into the, into Mr. Engineer Kennedy's presentation, as we, you know, stated at the previous town hall meeting, these issues have been going on for some time. All of the traffic issues, whatever area we're talking about, have been going on for some time. And some of them, it seems like there may be a, I hate to use the word easier, but perhaps easier, or maybe a quicker fix, if you will, to it. And so we would certainly be addressing those in some way. Some of them may have a temporary quick fix while we're working on a mid or long-term, or more of a permanent type fix for those, for those issues. But that's why we are taking such time and looking at sort of each area, because each area is unique and has its own uniqueness to the problem and then the possible solutions for that issue. So I'm gonna turn it over to City Engineer Kennedy and ask if he would give you this presentation and explain what we're looking at.
Thank you for attending. This is a public building, it's a public meeting in the context of being a public building. You're all certainly invited to be here. You should know that the commissioners, each and every year, are not here specifically as any commission meeting. During commission meetings, commissioners can debate, they can discuss, they can make decisions. This is in a sense a workshop being scheduled by the commissioner for your presence. So, you don't hear interchange, interchange between the mayor, Commissioner Castillo, or the official cycle with each other, it's because under the sunshine law, which governs our meetings, there's a theory of law that says that if something could be discussed tonight that may foreseem to come to the city commission, they can't begin to debate that tonight either, because the general public is not always going to let it pretend. And the risk is really something that you have to protect against. So, if you're not, kind of conversation, it's not because of the people, they don't care. They care very, very, very much about your presence and that's why you are here in this public place to listen to the presentation. So, I wanted to add that that's how the hall works, you know, to give you the best information. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Good evening. Can you all hear me? Okay. Okay, now we're here to discuss the Charter West traffic concerns. Some of the, these city staff observations, and I'm gonna list these and also some of residents' comments that we received, and they're not all of them, but hopefully it will help facilitate discussion. Parents lining up prior to arrival dismissal, that's definitely a big one. Vehicles blocking 184 and 14th. Vehicles blocking Pembroke and 184th. Illegal U-turns on Pembroke. Illegal left turns on Pembroke out of the lot. And parent drop-offs on the roadways. Some of the resident concerns that we've, we received, parents lining up prior to arrival dismissal times, you know, we observed the same thing. It's difficult to enter Encantada from 184 during school times. And it's also difficult to leave your community during school times. And there's heavy traffic flow from the south into Pines, so a lot of people are trying to possibly go north and west of 27. So, there's some solutions in the future for that. Also, there are complaints about the stabilization lots of times, it takes multiple cycles to be able to make it through intersections. Some of the short-term improvements that we suggested, and they're certainly open for discussion, all of these are certainly open for discussion. We're proceeding with a lot of these, but we want to hear your input on all of them. We're gonna facilitate improved communication with the school to the parents. Specifically, we're hoping to have a message from PD to the parents about enforcement and a specific message to the HOA from the police department about enforcement as well. And we're going to educate the parents a little bit more about busing. You know, we already do that, but we generally do a better job. And so we're gonna express the safety and availability of the busing, since that's one of the issues this year is a lot of students aren't riding the bus like they did in the past. We have been doing the increased enforcement. Over the past two weeks, we've issued 92 citations and 25 written warnings. And we do have a service state station to want any form Pembroke assist with the traffic. We're creating a traffic operations plan for the school. And we also encourage a walking plan, you know, for Encantada with possibly, you know, walking speed from the clubhouse. Let's see if you might hear your comments on that. Some more medium-term type solutions are additional signage and stabilization. Those have to be worked through the Byron County. We're hoping to get protected left turn arrows on many of the approaches to the intersection at any form Pembroke. And possibly ask for Commissioner Moses Lewis to let the county know that we're serious about that. We're doing an information gap and we're getting the specific zip codes for students that are in the school. And that will help us target for possible locations of bus drop-off and pickup and also looking at the last mile transportation. We're looking to increase the onsite queuing with a new circulation plan. I'll add a little more of that in the next slide. And since there'll be a new pattern improvement, this will allow additional stacking on the school site. Two projects that we currently have out to bid, they're expected to come in in the next few weeks. We have the pre-K parking lot and turnaround improvements on the school site as well as the pre-K parking lot access improvements. Both of these projects that are gonna be done on the school site will improve the actual circulation on the school, add additional queuing. So, some long-term improvements. There's a surtax project that we're working on with the city of Miramar. We're partnering with the city of Miramar on it. And we have been approved for the large Pembroke Road improvement project, which goes from Dykes to US 27 and the extension of Miramar Parkway. So this project includes the widening to four lanes Pembroke from Dykes to 196. Extending Pembroke Road from 196 to US 27, it'll be a four lane cross-section as well. And extending Miramar Parkway out of the Pembroke Road. So, hopefully that should direct quite a few cars off of 184 and Pembroke intersection. And that's basically my presentation. And now, open up for questions.
Mr. Dodge, was there anything, whether you wanted to share with the committee tonight?
No. At this time, Carl has made the presentation. There it is. The purpose of this meeting is to hear from you, members of the community, your observations, any other kind of recommendations you may see for issues that are severe problem to you. We'll try to address those with the recommendations we're considering right now. Take as many cars as possible off of 184 to avoid the blockage of going into your community. One thing you will notice by the presentation, our police have had strong presence there. They'll continue until our parents and people who are in our community understand what the rules are. And just Kennedy talked about additional signage. That has to be a signage designating, you know, not really parking on the square, it's not blocking the intersection so that we have greater strength when we issue citations to people. Our traffic unit has been very considerate by giving many warnings. And after the warning period is over, that's when we started issuing these citations. I have my.
Mr. Kennedy alluded to some improvements that we're looking for on this property. Is that something that could be shared at this point with the immediate that we're looking for?
We're gonna try to illustrate that to you. We're, we can go off the bid and we are doing improvements onsite to bring able, be able to bring more cars on the site and change the pattern of how children are dropped off from site and picked up, which in essence will take more cars off the roadway. And it is being divided up that the, the bus by law has its bus loop. And that, at a certain time, the bus loop is off of 184 in front of the elementary school. That, we're required by law that you have to have no witness of the traffic mixing with that. So we're creating another entrance just for the preschool to take the mix of preschool parents mixing with the middle school and elementary school riders, because many of those parents, because some are infants right up to three and four, parents park, they go in and pick up their child and then they leave. And they're all at different times of the day, so it's not a standard dismissal time per se. But the elementary and the middle school students are basically in the same car line. So, we're creating a much longer car line by creating a couple of different loops on the site. So with that, in the presence of traffic to move cars in and off of the site, we're hoping that certainly will provide some additional reading. Picture, Carl's been ready to show you is the entrance off of Pembroke Road. And originally it was through the loop rate here in the front parking lot. Now it's being extended all around the campus.
So, unfortunately it's extremely embedded all on the screen. But if you look at the last Pembroke Bridge, the cars will be able to enter the parking lot here in the west end, queue around, stack where they currently do now. And then do all the yellow line, they'll be able to make their way all the way up to the top. And we're gonna put a, almost like roundabout at the, in the top here and the cars will take them around. So we'll be able to handle approximately 75% more cars onsite in stacking mode. And also, currently on the north side of the school, right up in this area here, the younger children that dropped off here, that will change and they'll be dropped off on the east side of the school. But currently, the ones who are dropping off preschool children make this actual loop right here. But they're actually gonna be entering through the east side off 184 now, because there's potentially less of those children.
Mr. Dodge, I think you said, could you clarify, I thought you said that that, this has already been put out for bid? Are you hearing that?
I think the bids are new back this month. And what we're hoping to, our goal is to bring the award of contract commission, the first meeting of November. And we're gonna try to get the work done over the December holiday break period out of school. And requires some payments, quite a bit of work, but we believe we can get it during that time when everyone's on vacation. And hopefully, come the first of the year, you'll see significant improvement. We're hoping you're gonna continue to see improvement now with our traffic unit.
Which is an access from Encantada. And my experience has been, and I've been living here almost 23 years. The parents are gonna come in and now if they see that they haven't, that they can, the kids are being checked in or dropped off to the backside, they're gonna pull into Encantada, try to make a U-turn, drop off the kid so you can walk back into the school.
Mr. Dodge?
We're gonna be addressing that through enforcement. In fact, we had a meeting today to talk to the association on some means by which we can prohibit parents coming in and trying to make the U-turn to drop them off. We have a similar issue in another community out west, that we were able to solve that problem of people making illegal U-turns. And Carl, is it the ballots they put in, the plastic ones?
Yeah, the, 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 the.
The what?
The, 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 the.
Yes.
Because I know we, we tried, we put a chain on that turnaround a few years ago to stop, to stop that U-turn. Because originally, when that's, when the school was built, they were using that turnaround to be able to access that area right there.
Well, they just have an entrance there.
Right, and we closed it. But now, when we put that chain, and we paid for it, and we still got the post there, we were told by the city that we had to remove the chain because it was a violation of fire code.
Right. That will then?
I understand that, but they're not gonna be able to be there for, we need a permanent solution that can keep parents in the, the gentleman's state.
The, the, the terrace is, is great, and I, I will share with you. Going out, none of the parents are doing that anymore. Now, just a few days ago, I'm coming back into my community. And so what the parents are doing now is they pull into the community, the kid jumps out, I almost hit him with my car. And so kid runs around and then she makes a U-turn, they don't see them. The police officers don't see it because there's a bunch of bushes there. So the parent is sneaky, just pulls up, kid jumps out of the car, and then the parent just turns over to U-turn leaves. We need to eliminate that area where, where the.
And so, and so the enforcement portion of it is, what you're saying though, is during those school hours, the early and the later hours, and that's what we're gonna have to deal with and come up with that plan for that to be, for that enforcement to happen.
Do we have to have the turnaround area at all?
Well, that's, I think, something Mr. Dodge said that we were looking at.
That, that, that's gonna cure the problem.
Yes.
We'll, we'll look at it. But normally those turnaround, around where they're for people who make mistakes or drive in, they gotta get a way to get out. They don't realize it's a gated community. And with school parents, they know it. So, I don't know if there's some way during school hours we could block it, because that's where the problem.
Well, that's where we put the chain. We, we put that chain to be able to eliminate that.
Now, if we could look at that again, if we retire it, the police, and we'll, if that's an easy solution, let's change.
It's there, it's already put in place. Clarification, they're there with a law, it's, we just obey the fire.
For clarification, Nelson, the, the chain that we had discussed years ago in the past was the one that was placed in to access the school where the gate is. You're talking about the chain for the turnaround.
Yes, because two posts that we, that we implemented, there's two yellow posts and there's a chain.
So, that, that's something that we would absolutely.
Well, too.
Right, I got it. That's something that, that's something that we have to absolutely discuss with fire, because fire code is out of my realm of expertise. But they're the ones that are gonna determine that. If they say that it can't be blocked for, for fire code reasons, then.
I, I do think that was.
But what's funny is.
That was put there as an entrance to the school.
Yes, yes.
We might wanna look to see if it can be solid landscaping.
That will stop the flood, but then it won't have to come into the guardhouse. And it will be determined to be coming in, they don't wanna go through the guardhouse.
Right.
That would eliminate the flood.
A, a permanent resolution.
Yes, that change, but only then during the time of morning and during the time of the evening. And I'm asking for it the whole day. So I think that's what maybe fire needs to kind of understand.
And we were having large security officers, our security guard was doing it and taking it out. Now, in addressing the thing with the fire code though, the problem is that as Commissioner Schwartz pointed out to me, you got, you got parents that are parking here, so they're producing a fire as you.
But let us verify it. I don't believe that would be a fire code because the radius there isn't that great that you have to have it. Because if a fire engine has to get into your community, they're not gonna turn around there, they're gonna go through the gate. And you have plenty of room within your community where there's a radius to turn around.
And Mr. Loib, I don't think that if there's an emergency, that a chain is gonna stop anywhere, fire engines or any of them, from both police or anybody from college.
Well, that's like the, the back entrance, they can gate entrance with one of the, the fence.
Right.
It's the same thing.
So, so. We.
Hi, I'm, before I spill that, and I'm a parent as well as a resident of Encantada. My biggest concern is that some of the residents, when children are being punished, because we are trying to, well, to stop our children. And this, this very afternoon, my father-in-law was told, I guess he probably arrives at like 3:40 or something like that, or 2:40. And he was told that he could not make a right from Encantada onto 184, so he had to go up and around Encantada. And that fired me up, of course, because, you know, he's doing, he's doing this every day, not causing a ruckus. I know sometimes he does get there a little early, so he is one of these people that is lining up early. But I'm talking to him about it, you know? But the thing is, is we as residents, who specifically, one of the reasons for getting into this community was for this school. So, this is, this is a concern of mine that we are being.
So, I'm not sure I understand, explain it to me again, what's.
So we, go ahead, sir.
I can have a read on that. Kind of resident here, picture the same thing. Problem we're having is the lines are set. The line is south of the intersection, north of the intersection. Rather than residents that are pulling up and stopping, the line isn't going anywhere. Now they're blocking one of the true lanes at Green, at the intersection. For other people who might exit to go south of, so you can't stop there, it's like blocking intersections. So they're being directed to go out in one of the other lanes. It's not like there's no other lane, the line changes.
There's nobody behind them though, you're still directing them.
They can't block the crosswalk, they can't see at Green Line, they can't block the 4th.
So still, I think something needs to be.
Before, wait, one second, before we go. I know what you're saying, like something needs to be done. We had, we had a brief discussion earlier with Mr. Loib and City Manager, we talked a little bit about it earlier today as well, about sort of an informational slash educational kind of a letter, if you will, memo, whatever you wanna call it, that would have this kind of information in it that we, we as the city would put out and we would ask then the HOA to be able to put out. We put it out to like our, our students here, our parents who are at the school. And then we would ask then the, the HOA to, you know, put that out so that everybody really understands when we get all these changes and fixes in place, like what they should expect, what, you know, what, how can they manipulate, and not manipulate, but how can they maneuver through and get where they need to go. So, that informational piece, letter, memo, whatever you wanna call it, will be, will be, will be coming up.
So, as a parent of a kindergarten who is not allowed to walk, and as a parent who's not allowed to go pick up the kindergarten, is there something that we can put into place with?
And Principal Castellano is, is here, he had an airport drop-off.
Is there something that we can put into place for, you know, the Encantada residents who have kids who are, you know, can walk? You know, we can give them a specific group, I know this is asking for some privilege here, but a specific group or an attendant or something that can walk down to an area where all the parents can walk, pick them up and disperse from there. Is that asking a little bit too much or?
I think that's, I think that's a valid point for us to look at.
I mean, that's a huge, because we are a majority.
And that would take a lot of cars off if you're parking at your clubhouse and parents would walk over to pick up their children. We have to look at how we have to set that up, because as Officer said, we're under state law regarding a single point of entry.
And I completely agree with that.
So, we have to make sure that if someone is coming to pick up the child, we need to know that that's the parent and that person has permission. When you go through the car, we identify that person. So, we'll look at it.
Like, I'll think I'll put a chip in, you know, calling out committee for it.
Okay, I guess, because who's appointing you the chair?
There you go.
My, my same concern is like, as she said, but what is happening here is like, you know, all officers are standing at the gate of 184, okay, on the community. Nobody is there on that Pembroke. So what is happening is that traffic is, is blocking there and this line is not moving. So today, as an example, like 2:40 I went to pick my kids, like, you know, I was told to go all the round south or north to come in, stand in the line. And behind my car, only two, two or three cars there, even though I was asked to go all. When I saw the front, there was not a single police officer standing at 184 and it was, it was like stopping all that traffic. So, standing at the community gate doesn't make any sense. Like, you know, four officers standing there and not a single, single officer on, on that, on the Pembroke.
The service agent is also stationed at that corner. Put that intersection.
No, it was not that, nobody was there. It was, nobody was there, so it today, today, four officers standing at the gate and go, and the one, one standing at the entrance of this middle school. So that, that is also creating a problem for whole traffic. And Encantada residents are being punished because that road is not moving. And what's happening is we are asking, we are being asked to go north or south to make a whole line and come back and stand in the line.
So, just so you know, I don't know what you're saying, the reason was not somebody there we, you know, committed, but that is a permanent post for us. So there should be someone at that intersection at all times. I'm not saying there wasn't.
It was not there today.
Okay, well, that is something that absolutely I didn't know about, we need to know about, because we would know that immediately, because that is a permanent post, there has to be someone there. So I'm glad to learn that today, because I'm gonna inquire and find out why there wasn't somebody there and I assure you there will be.
So Commissioner, what's happening is like, you know, it's affecting my job also. Like, like 2:40, I went, I went, I came to pick it, and I am reaching at home at 3:30. So that, that's the biggest problem, working from home doesn't mean like, you know, you can go anywhere and do come and back like, it was not an issue before.
I, I.
And some of, some of the officers are, you know, there's like, last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there was a lady who was standing there. Whenever she is there, there's a whole problem. Like Thursday, Friday, like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there was no issue at all on that leg. And not a single officer asked me or anybody to go for, to go and take the whole round up on that car.
Well, it's been said many times, there shouldn't take you that long to drop off your child and get, and get back where you're going. But here, as you can see from what we've talked about this evening, there are not just one, not just two, but a number of issues that have caused that to happen. And we are trying to address. And we are trying to address each one of them and then collaboratively put them all together to make the situation better out here. For safer, you know, better time, you know, all of that stuff. So but like what you just said, and like our officers were saying, that we need to know that because it is a permanent position. And there could have been some unforeseen reason why that person wasn't there. But it needs to be addressed. So we appreciate that information. And we are taking notes. We are going to go back on all of the issues that are brought up tonight and see how collectively they can all be, you know, addressed and then individually addressed and then put together collectively to help cause, help get rid of some of these issues. Just the one, just the one that you saw there on how we're getting 75% more cars off of those roads and onto school property. It's going to be a huge impact to the intersections and to all of the other stuff. Now we just need to work on our walkers and that kind of stuff. But again, there's no, there's no one answer because there's no one issue. There are many and we have to just keep chomping away at them until we find the right answers. First and foremost, it has to be, not to say that always has to be, has to be. So that costs a little bit of problem with the back gate and walking and all that. But we'll figure out another way to make it happen. That's all. More than one way to skin a cat or, you know, as they say, as long as we keep talking about it and having meetings like this where we all can hear and put our opinions in and voice our concerns and have authority this year to make things happen and make those changes. I mean, I'm already seeing significant outbreak here with these yellow lines that are telling me 75% more cars. That's a pretty darn quick, pretty darn quick, I think, you know, not the total answer, but a pretty darn quick.
I mean, when is this going to take place? When is this plan to take it to a cut? Christmas? Christmas break?
The renovations, we hope to, the construction, we hope to get down to Christmas.
Right, we were.
We're doing other measures for traffic, right, also.
We're going to make sure that this doesn't, I guess if we do put that check at the gentleman mansion, the parents won't be able to try to get through the other side of, through the Encantara side.
There's no opening.
Well, they'll find a way. Well, sometimes that case is open.
There is a gate there.
Yes, sometimes it's open.
Yeah, there's a gate there. And if it's open, we need to know.
I know the police.
There is a gate there.
I do know the police put cones.
We used to have a gate there. We know why it's there. So I'm sure it's secured if it isn't, then we'll take the gate off.
Okay, it's chained closed.
Yes, yes. And the chain was removed and the police just recently put cones and they put a police line. I don't know if the chain's been replaced or not, but there are signs there now that say not to.
We need to look at that being installed.
I'll look at it right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. So I'm also one of the parents from the school that I live in Encantara. And my concern, similar to my neighbor here, is in the morning, it takes me about 40 minutes to drop my kids at school. I can, I do have the potential to walk. I have two kids, two young kids. And I don't feel safe all the time crossing over from the clubhouse to the other side. Because people really drive fast and I have two little kids. And I understand. I mean, I live in the neighborhood, you know, but I heard earlier that they said that there might be a plan for walkers from Encantara. Is that also in the morning or is that only in the evening to come? That was my question. Because, and I know, like, I would prefer to walk from Encantara because I don't like that illegal U-turn back there.
That's dangerous.
But other than that, it would take me 15 minutes to get back.
Besides being dangerous, all it does is bring that car right back into the intersection and wrap up the intersection, which doesn't make sense.
But if not, then it takes you another half 20 minutes to get back home. I mean, I work from home, so I need to get back home.
So, Mr. Dunn, is that her question?
Well, I think the chairperson, I would appoint him, is working to be working on that issue.
I'm not joking. I mean.
I wasn't either.
We're not either. Stop it.
So we're going to work on that issue for all of our students who live in Encantara to find out if there's another solution. Because that also will help on traffic, keep your cars off the road. But you have to understand, not all parents will agree with that. Even some will want to still.
Then they can, then they can finish their part.
Okay.
We talked about long-term solutions to alleviate the traffic on 184. And for residents of Encantara, you know, like my neighbors are saying, people are still getting back into the community. Quickly after they drop off the child, get back to the child. Why can't we make that back entrance to the fence, resident-only exit entrance?
That's up to the H O A. There's an access there.
I mean, there's going to be an extension.
You would have to ask the H O A on that. I do know there's a code right there. I don't know how that would affect these.
On Pepper Road, right?
No, that would be on.
I don't think he's talking about 196. I think he's talking about the fire exit.
He's talking about coming in. Yeah, he's talking about coming in.
From where?
I'm talking about the.
The entrance.
The exit on Pepper Road.
On Pepper Road.
Oh, yes, that's a separate, you're talking about the fire exit.
Yeah, why not make a residence.
And the partnership. And there's some, there's a lot of residents that live there that do not want to have that.
There's a safety issue.
Yes.
What if you call 911 and the fire station is right at the corner? And here you are having a heart attack. The fire engine has moved all the way, residents come all the way to 184 when they're right there, 190.
That's an issue for the board. That has something to do with it.
And that's something we can discuss at the meeting. We'll let that out.
Raise, that's not a city issue. That's really right now. That's really.
And just so you know, that's a breakaway fence. Would you say they can break the fence? But we can talk that out.
Yes, let me get the gentleman behind you first, since you've already spoken. Yes, sir.
Okay, so just with the new virtual fight, is there anything to deter students from not exiting the vehicle where they normally exit right now? Like, how are parents going to keep their kids in the car? I feel like they go all the way to the back of the school.
There's no way for them to get off because it's a single point of entrance and where is Mike?
So with the cars lining up, I understand how they line up now, though they're going to go back toward the back of the school now. Like, how do we keep them from exiting the car, start walking off? It's just going to delay it a lot.
Well, but they're still stuck in line.
Yeah, they're still going to be stuck.
It's not going to slow them. There's no benefit to the parent get their child out of the car. They're not going to get out of line any sooner.
There's the parties that always are running.
There's what?
The parties.
You have line monitors for the other. I mean, we may have to expand that a little bit. Well, just say you can't do this. You have to stay in the car until the drop-off.
One other thing was, you know, I was still thinking about the drop-off person in front of us. You know, with all the weather, all the other schools have it, there should be some sort of over and overhang, kind of like the academic village ads. You know, kids get dropped off.
So that's a plan towards the north side.
And then exiting the line and now having to make the right, stopping the illegal U-turn, how's, where are we on that?
Ask that question.
So exiting the school, making a right to go west on Pepper, preventing the illegal U-turn, but also to avoid that headache of that other school in some respect?
Well, we, as we're looking at, and I think that's, we had our discussion today, creating a legal U-turn, but not at that point, much further down the road, further west, so.
But again, we're hoping, oh, I'm sorry. Again, we're hoping that with having 75% more cars on the property, that the flow of traffic will be greatly improved because you'll be able to move on through, get out of there. Do what you're going to do and get out of your car.
I think it's not a legal U-turn. I think it's more that the parents want to go east. So yes, you're going to do the flow, but if the parents are making that a legal U-turn to go back east on the other road.
Yes, that's what we're, that's what we are looking at. The engineering is looking at it. And we've discussed that with our police department. They are observing all of the, the traffic patterns of our parents.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Talked too much. That's the purpose of this meeting. It's a hearing hall.
So again, we're all parents and kids here, right? So back to car line. And I'm going to direct this to you because this has to actually do with the parents in the car line. And the parents in the car line, I'm sorry, but many of them are very, are horrible with having the kids, for parents to get out of the cars. They get out of the car to get the kids out of the car. And that's one thing that really holds up the line. I mean, I get it. You have moms who get out and they kiss the kids and they hug the kids and the kids are kissing Melly's. And there's a lot of things that are happening. And I know it sounds.
They don't want to go to school.
It sounds crazy, but a lot of times, we're here rushing, trying to get them through because it's 45 minutes to get the kids through the car lines. And we're watching the cars stack up. So I know, you know, you're constantly sending it out to them. But I think you've got to bombard them some more. And I don't know if we could even put up some signs or something in the car line that says, please do not get out. You know, like stay in your vehicles, do not get out of the cars because that's what they're doing. And it's really causing a lot of problems.
You've helped us out there, haven't you?
Yes, yes.
We do something that most schools don't do. What we do, we open doors.
Yes, and we're taking our bags. And that's what we're trying to do quickly.
And we try to get them going.
We try to open the doors, take out the bags, and get the kids out so the parents don't get out.
You're all going to have to repeat offenders.
Yes.
Susan?
So we've got so many competing interests for us this year. And one thing that I just, first of all, I want to say that you thinking about a solution and you thinking about a solution is really, really important. I'm sitting here listening. I am a, I'm Susan, high, high listener at Encantara, high educator, parent, great parent, that is common name. And so all this competing interest, and we're talking about all of these things. But one of the things we really, really need to keep in mind all the time is what the situation of mental health with children. They're getting into a car, they've got a stressed parent. They're giving their school somebody a question about. Somebody's trying, either, I mean, somebody greeting them at the car maybe and taking them back and bringing them into school. Other kids now are hearing that there's going to be something else. They're going to have to go somewhere else. They're getting nervous. And they get in school when they are a little stressed and their teacher is, they act out and their teacher is getting on them. There's a mental health issue here with children that needs to be considered as decisions are being made. So Iris said there's going to be a plan. We're going to take the pieces together, we're going to put them together to create a plan. That plan needs to be carefully thought out in terms of how it's going to be dedicated to families, yes, but to the children. So that they know what they're doing, so that they're comfortable with it, so that they know they're going to be taken care of, so they don't get to stress every day.
That's really, that's really a great, really a great, great point. And thank you for bringing that up. And our raising positive children, maybe that's something we got to talk about with that. But, but the other part of it, the other part of it is the kids, the kids feed off the parents. I mean, they feed off of what the parents are, you know, feeling. So if in fact, what we're attempting to do here is going to ease that pressure, that stress for a parent, that should almost have an immediate release for the children, is what I'm hoping. And what I think is a logical, a logical place to go. But I agree with you that not only do we need to talk to parents and the community about what's happening through this communication letter that we talked about, but perhaps, I don't know, maybe some of our mental health folks at the school can help us. Like, it might well, you know, we just hired a whole team of mental health professionals. And perhaps that is something that we can ask them to address in conjunction with all of this whole traffic stress issue to be able to have, we have the adult version of what we're tackling and then we have the child's version of how we're doing that.
Susan, I'll make a quick point, and I think you're absolutely right. An educator thinks this way. The first 30 minutes of every school day starts with S C L, social motion. We have activities, we have exercises. It's the first 30 minutes of every city. Because we know it's that important, especially this year. So it's something that we'll continue to do and continue to push forward. We're absolutely right. That and instructional time. That's one thing I will protect, instructional time and student social motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I have another question. I was told, when I was here three years ago, when I'm here, you know, you are not allowed by law to have a bus run, right? Like, because we live too close, right? Because, I would have been excited if a bus could come here and like if she was like.
Yeah, we have a facility and four buses are going to pick up my children.
Because, I mean, I think that way you take off all the cars from Encantara. I mean, I get, you know, I get with the pandemic and people are scared, but either that or a really big car that keeps them along. Because from the clubhouse, I'm just saying. Because the further in the community, it would take longer to walk. So we have to walk from the clubhouse.
Well, I think, I think we can talk about that, but I'll add a little like subtitle to that about. No, no. Okay, PD, do you all have anything else that you need to add this evening?
I would have nothing.
No, that's a little bit my coach here.
I'm going to need your day.
Michael got it. Michael got it. He got that right. Principal Castellano, do you have anything else you need to add?
I just want to thank the parents. It's been a very different year. We have 250 more cars. You see the line, there's eight spots for us to put kids in and out. It's an enormous task, enormous job. And with 250 more cars, it has made things that much more challenging. Together with our PD, our city commissioner, they have a, they have a good system. They let us see how to produce solutions, what we're trying to do, and we'll get there. And I think with COVID, hopefully, we do see one day we'll get better ridership in our buses. We'll get more kids, you know, in that sort of transportation. We'll be okay, I think, because the next six to eight months.
Mr. Lloyd, do you have something?
Yeah, just one more question and a comment real quick. You know, you got a presentation, I hope we come through it all the way to 3:47. When is that anticipated? When will that take place? When will that happen? Is that what Olivia, a lot of the U-turns are talking about?
It's bad.
Look, Miramar advertised last month for an engineer to start to design. They expect to award the engineering contract by the end of the year. So it's a big project and they're going to design all three phases of this project at one time. Because like I said, there was the project to widen Pepper Road from Dykes to 196 and then to extend from 196 to US 27 and also to Miramar Parkway. They're going to design it at one time and they're going to bid it so that they do the extension from 196 to 27. That's expected to be the first part to be done. And the next part would be the widening and the third part would be the extension of Miramar Parkway. Those could be compressed. It just depends on if there's a loosening up of the certex funds to allow more money to be dedicated to one particular project than they currently allow.
So several years.
So it's several years.
Mr. Dunn, do you have anything else you need to add?
I just want to put that up, I can. I don't vote on the commission. I'm the city attorney for the town city commissioner. But on the 22nd of September, the commission did two very important things, which may not be able to. They adopted two resolutions at a special meeting. That those two resolutions, one of which relates to specifically a street, Northwest North Street. But the other resolution related that any street the city provides could be affected by COVID-19 student pickups and drop-offs. And all manner of things which delegates the city manager the ability as best as he can, consistent with the commission's direction, to work on traffic options, short term, mid-range, and long term. It's a very significant issue. They adopted these resolutions and they discussed them, debated them, and they voted upon them at a special meeting. Those resolutions were sent the next morning, the next day or so, to the county's professional staff, the traffic engineering people. The city has a contract with the county, it's called Traffic Engineering Agreement, that's been in place since the 1980s, advising the county that we, the people of the city, federal clients, the citizens and residents, want the county's. Encantara clients, the citizens and residents, want the county's help and cooperation, and not just their lifespans, to the extent that they want them to participate, to help the city in all manner of options, measurable, uh, strategies, to provide for, for, to reduce traffic and protect public health and safety. So, the mayor and the commission all unanimously supported those resolutions. And they were transmitted to the county, county commission staff and the professional staff. So, it just, just happened in the past couple of weeks. So, you should know that these things actually did occur, with the express purpose of following a state statute under chapter three sixteen, that actually gives local government some limited options regarding limited roadway enforcement options, which have to be conferred upon with the police department, the fire department, traffic engineering, and for our county's laws. A combination, a lot of people unfortunately, but the end result of which is, the mayor and commission did some very significant items, definitely.
Mr. Lloyd?
Quick question on that, so, I recall before, in order to give a change with the traffic, where you like, we had to go to the county to get approval, so, the resolution allowed now the city to make the changes, whether we needed a stop sign somewhere?
Some, some were legally possible. And, and the resolution was very open-ended intentionally, specifically, every option developed in the administration to find options and ways to, to, to cut, deal with the traffic issues. Um, we had it notified, the county, the county has the resolutions. Uh, we were hopeful, and I'm just a city attorney and I'm not the administration, but that they would be receptive and responsive and responsible. So, so that, that they do play a role, and, and extend it, there are some limited options under chapter three sixteen that does give local government some limited options for, and to take what they call, which really quickly, they're gonna take it every time. Um, the provisions of chapter show not, meaning to prevent local authorities respecting streets and highways under jurisdiction, and with a reasonable exercise of their police powers, from, uh, designating particular highways or roadways for use by traffic moving in one direction, designating any street as a through street, or designating any intersection as a stop or cylinder section, designating regulated, what's called, traffic on plain streets, interesting concept, and also adopting and enforcing such temporary or experimental regulations as be necessary to cover emergencies or special conditions. So, this commission asked, are we looking to the law to find out what the options were? Those are the options that the commissions have exercised in the options.
And, and the two, the two, uh, the two resos were, were designed with specific, you know, in, in mind. One was, uh, out west, for a specific road out west. And, and then one was the more, was the more general, because we knew that, um, and as I've said all along, that this school traffic issue, while it seems like we're starting out west of the city, that's because that's where we have received the most complaints, the most, you know, of, of traffic issues. That's not to say that we don't have traffic, school traffic flow issues all through the city, but they're all different, they're all unique, their surroundings determine what can and cannot be done, what the needs are and all that. So, the second resolution, as the city attorney said, was, was intentionally left to be, while moving in the right direction, was left to be more open-ended so that we could sort of plug in as needed on, 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 on the red zone. So, so I was very happy to put those two items on, and I have yet to thank my, my colleagues for their support because I think as, as the city attorney said, it was a very, um, a very good move to, to, to do that. Because we do still have to play nice with the county, as much as we don't love having to do that, we do still have to play nice, and we do still need to do a number, a number, a number of things. So, if through that process, we can get it there, I'll have a happy calendar, yeah, okay. Um, and you, Mr. Madam Chair?
Just one, they, like, last, getting back onto the Encantara to 184. I'm, I'm wanna be really, I guess, careful about how I say this, but our residents are still being punished by trying to make that right turn on 184. So, how do we, how do we help that situation in the short term? Because we shouldn't be punished and have to go the whole way back out and start a run.
Because I was explaining, that's a circumstance where maybe the issue where we have, like, the light lines are superior and the lights, and it's not, that's like, there's a problem, like, we're staying there for two months, you know? It's now the block, it, it grew like two nine meters. If the light is ruling and the light is red and your space hasn't been formed, they wanna turn the light.
Okay, okay.
But the issue is occurring when that light is not working, it's locked up to the crosswalk.
I understand.
The light works there, the light is now green, there's cars behind that one, actively committed. The residents are just sitting there because they're waiting for the light to move, and they're just gonna back to the line. If, if your space, and the light is ruling...
But technically, they're not cutting it, they're...
Forgetting, they can't get that side of the line, that's causing that traffic obstruction. And that multiple light sections, if the car doesn't know that, person can't try to net the just lane. Or whenever this light opens up to move, now they can't...
I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm so sorry. Because we really appreciate everything you guys. I know I've talked to you guys before, you guys do an amazing job. Um, but one of the things that was not said to me directly, so, it, it's sort of, you know, like this we can give, um, was said that, you know, why are we making excuses this time? Well, because the residents of Encantara are complaining about having the traffic backed up here. And I don't like that that was said, simply, I don't know what you were saying, because it wasn't said to me. And I don't like that that was repeated to a resident as, like, almost like, oh, you guys are coming a bus, so... But, but I, but I don't like it the way that it was said, I understand, sure. I'm not, it wasn't you, I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, India.
But they're made, part of the law, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Lloyd.
I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly, though, because part of the problem is that that, and that's why we are putting up those stopping signs, and I might be misunderstanding this. You're using that lane as a stack lane for parents who are trying to make the change going to the school?
No.
So, parents, I'm gonna joke, because this is...
They're, they're, they're maybe coming out when the light is stagnant for a few, twenty minutes.
Right, because this is what's happening.
And it's locked up, they wanna come out, they wanna get in the line. So, now, all the people have a line, the light turns green, they're parked there. So, now, one of your lanes is now sort of, it's a single lane, you're trying to walk around. So, when that occurs, if the light is green, we must continue to move. Now, that means you're gonna have to turn out.
But this is what's aggravating that, this is what's aggravating that from, from an observation that I've made, and I've met with Major Zeke's before in the past with this. What's happened is, the Yola non-residents are coming, once again, going back to the turn lane. They'll turn, and now they become part of that stack lane. Now, they're occupying that entire lane there, residents can't get out. For me to go to worst, I have to make that right turn.
But we're hoping that that is a solution on this, on the U-turn coming in with...
Yes, I just wanna make sure that we...
At the intersection?
No, we have to make a right turn. We gotta make a right turn coming out, no. No, when you're coming out, no, see, when you're coming out and you're going eastbound, you gotta make the right turn to go on one, not make a right turn, to go on 184. So, now you have all these lanes here are backed up, they're stacked. Because you're having, residents are, what non-residents are doing is they're coming in into our entrance on the other side, or you quest, they make the U-turn at the turn lane, and now they become part of the stack lane. Now, their father-in-law or, or father needs to leave, he can't make a turn to get out. Now, what most people have to do, force to do, is to go on the left turn lane and make that illegal right turn, which, that's a problem, that should not be stacked, that should be open.
So, Mr. Lloyd, and I think, and I...
So, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page as leading that lane three.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, excellent. Actually, I wanna make sure that we're on the same page.
And I think we addressed the issue of the...
The last...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Wait, hold on. I think we addressed the issue, or we are addressing the issue of the coming in the U-turn, which is causing them this to get up here, and then causing them to go in the left turn, but making a right turn, and then messing all that up, so I think we've got, we're, we're, we're...
Resident, we're not, if you're there, and that light is green, and it's stable, totally leave it. In the line, you have to be in the line, but all that has to clear, so...
But again, I think that this getting more of the cars off of the road and onto school property is going to, is going to seriously, you know, help a lot, because you just don't have all of that right there at that intersection, which is just, you know, really, really a tough intersection. All right, um, Madam Chair, you're done, right?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, Raisa, yes, ma'am?
So, are we looking into, um, closing off that U-turn?
Yes, we are, we're gonna talk to the association, and we'll make a determination with fire. I honestly think it may be better to create a landscape, see, those will continue it, so you don't have chains or worry about when you make it up. It's not needed, just make it a landscape area, and people can, uh, as...
Okay, all right, well, listen, I, yes...
I just want to say, can you double-check the, uh, the speed zone lights? Because I don't go through there very often, but every once in a while, there'll be kids all over the place and it's not a, it's not flashing, so I think it's all...
Uh, can you, can you say it again a little bit louder?
Just check the, you know, the, the school crossing, yellow, no, the blinking yellow, but we'll, we'll check it. Yeah, sometimes the time you get off, it's...
So, so, if I could just, I can respond to that. There was, this light in particular, at 184 and 14th, as you're going southbound just north of that intersection, I drove by quite a few times, kids all over the place, traffic backed up and it wasn't flashing. Only to learn that per Broward County, there's only a certain timeframe by which those lights begin to flash and end flashing. And we don't have control of that information. Um, and it's, it sounds crazy, because with the, with the increased, uh, school traffic that we are experiencing, mostly based on COVID and more single, being a single child, you know, drop-offs and pickups, um, the problem is that those, uh, those drop-offs and pickups start early. So, really, there's a concern earlier than what those lights are scheduled by. Uh, we reached out to Broward County and we addressed the issue, and it's, it's per state statute, if I'm not mistaken, the timeline by which those are governed. To me personally, it sounds a little crazy, but it's state statute that they're...
It's forty-five minutes after school ends, but it's, kids are walking with their school, it's less than forty-five.
We, we certainly look at that, because I know we have, we have times when it changes. Because it does not change.
As something done, as we normally try to monitor it and also receive calls and address them. Negative responses, when we do, uh, identify one, it's not much, they, in the timeframe that it's supposed to, or we check the county, they're pretty good about correcting. And so, we really appreciate the feedback from parents, because, you know, we're a few hundred eyes out there, but you all are out there, you're monitoring constantly, we appreciate if you call us and just hope that we'll be right on top.
And, and we do need to stay on top of that, and as, as, as they're saying, because some of the schools, not necessarily here, but other schools that are close proximity, have tried to stagger their times in order to help change, you know, the quotes coming in, which means that some of these lights are really kind of off, off web with what's, with what's happening right now, so, um, we'll, we'll keep, keep working on that. Um, okay, so, I wanna thank you all for coming out tonight, I hope it was, was a form of being... But then I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank the city manager, city attorney, and our fabulous city engineers for providing, and our PD, so, thank you all.